This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, February 22, 2022. It is 2:00, 2:00, 2:00, and it's not even a full moon. Okay, roll call, please.
President Kardaski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Kobaki.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
And Trustee Service.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the Son.
And then, in the name of America, and to the Lord God, stands one nation, under God, and to his love, over the earth.
Thank you, and always remember the men and women we have around the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Action on the open minutes from January 11th, January 25th, and the closed minutes from January 25th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve all those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. Written communications or announcements. Does anybody have anything? I do. I have two things. First of all, our Public Works Department got another kudos for the garbage and recycling guys did an outstanding job for some of the residents. So they emailed Patty, and I always like to make a point of saying that because sometimes all we hear is the bad stuff. So that was number one. And number two, I personally witnessed extraordinary event at a local restaurant that one of our public safety officers who was off duty, there was a gentleman who had a medical issue, and our officer just jumped into action and responded immediately, and it was really great. So just wanted to mention those two things. Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on. Action on the consent agenda. Action on operators licenses, change of agent Aldi Inc., Wisconsin, DBA Aldi number 54, James D. Carles, CDI grant subrecipient agreement with commonplace on Mike McCarthy Way LLC, DBA Merge Urban Development, our investment report, budgeted expenditures, and department reports. I, before we have a motion on this, I would like to say I would like to pull the department reports for Public Works. Anybody else would like anything else taken out of the consent agenda?
I have a question on C and then a few on E, please.
Okay, so you'd like C pulled and E pulled. Okay, so we need a motion to approve all the other ones with taking out C, E, and F.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda without C, E, and F. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, Tracy.
Just a quick question on C on the grant. Just to clarify that, is no responsibility the village then? That will be the responsibility of the developer to take care of that and is on the hook for that. The village is not in any manner.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Okay, that was it. Thank you, Erin.
And E?
Just a couple of questions on some of the budget items. Twin Peaks Holding, what that one is?
That's a TIF PEGO incentive that we pay annually.
Okay.
It used to be, is a different holder. That's why it's a little bit late. We got a return. We didn't realize they changed ownership. But that's for Bayside Marketplace.
Okay. How about Pelham Benefits, Inc.?
That's for when employees retire. We pay out their accrual balances, and we send out payment to Pelham Benefits, who handles then with the employee how they're going to manage those funds.
Okay. And then just the tunnel Lawrence, the 39,000 for Lawrence.
That's for sewer, is it just sewer services? Yeah, just the sewer services for Lawrence. It's an agreement we have on the borders down there where we provide water and services, and then we have to pay for other portions. It's kind of a payback. So it's a standard quarterly payment to them.
Thank you.
Okay, and department report number F. I would like Doug to talk about the TDS is coming into the village to do some work, and it's going to be extremely disruptive to the village, and I would just like to have Doug give us a little update since we have some new board members.
Yes, if you remember, I want to say it was back in November, December, we had TDS Telecom before the board, just to give an update, back in late October, they had met with a number of the communities in the area to let them know that they're coming into the Green Bay market to put high-speed fiber optic throughout the communities. So all the communities, I think, except for Lawrence and possibly Ledgeview, all the other communities over the course of the next two years, TDS will be in those communities installing fiber optic line. In the city of Green Bay, I think there's about 500 and some miles they're planning. It's a little over 100 in Aloe, a little over 100 in Bellevue. There's 83 miles they're planning for the Village of Ashwabhanan. That'll be, just like you see during a normal summer, you'll see drill rigs out there putting in the underground fiber optic conduit, then pulling in the wiring. They'll have services, if you will, or little service cabinets, at-grade service cabinets at every other property line. When they were here back in October, November, they were mentioning of having up to eight, eight to 10 crews doing work throughout the village. And we recently got word from their contractor that that's been narrowed down. Their timeframe for construction has been pushed out to two years plus, and they've dropped the number of crews down to two or three that'll be working in Ashwabhanan. So it won't be quite as ominous as we were first thinking, but you'll still see them around, just like you see WPS doing work in front of houses, relaying gas services, electrical services. Well, this is going to be a whole new service, and they want to provide the ability to provide higher-speed internet to the residential community. They are in the process right now of submitting the permits to the village. We have a consultant on board of which TDS is paying for, who will be managing the permit review, the construction administration, things of that nature. Rukert and Milky will be doing that work for the village. The permit process is underway within, I'd say, the next month. There may be some construction starting of this work. The first areas it appears that they'll be working in are the Cormier Road, Ridge Road area. So Mary, around your house, Chris, near your business, Gary down there, Gary in your neighborhood, they may be doing some work as well. Those are the first two permits that they've pulled have been in that area. Again, this work is all legal, first of all. They're allowed to be within the right-of-way, but we've been working. Ashley's been wonderful helping us through some escrow agreements that we had to work through to get, to make sure that TDS is on the hook, if you will, for the services that are being provided, the inspection permitting services that are being provided, and a number of supplemental permit conditions that we wanted to get in writing to this contractor. We work with the WPSs, the Spectrums. We work with all those utility companies each year, and they understand a lot of the requirements that the village have, or some of the unique aspects that the village have come football season and things like that in terms of schedules. But this contractor is from out of the area, and most of the contractors doing the work for TDS are from out of the area. So we wanted to get in writing everything that we normally are able to work with the local contractors on. So I just wanted to bring that information forward. There's going to be a half-page notice in the spring brochure, just a very basic overview of what they're going to be doing, plus some websites in which people can go to get information. We're also going to be putting it on the village website, the upcoming work, and again, the information and who they can, if a resident has a question, who they can contact so that it's quick and easy, two quick and easy places where you can get that information and place the calls. Because this isn't a village-sponsored project, this is a private entity putting the utilities in, and we just want to make sure that the residents have the information should they need it. I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Doug. I just wanted to say I don't know if it was on purpose or on accident as to why they picked the spot to start with, which is going to affect three board members. But that's maybe to prove how good they're going to be.
I think it was sheer. I think it was sheer coincidence, and when we mentioned, when we saw the permits and when we mentioned that they have half the board that they're going to be doing work in front of right off the bat, their eyes did get a little bit bigger, and they said, well, we do really good work. Make sure to let them know. And we said, that's great to hear. You'll be tested right off the bat. So we're hoping that they keep to their word.
Okay.
Yeah, Tracy and I requested that, too.
Yeah, we did.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Okay, any questions for Doug? Okay, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, item C, E, and F.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items C, E, and F in the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number nine, action items. 9A, action regarding requested site plan review for a Hampton Inn Hotel at 830 Morris Avenue, parcel VA-66-7-F. Erin.
All right, thank you. The requested site plan review is before the board because it is within the sports entertainment zoning district. Any projects within the sports entertainment zoning district or the village center zoning district do come before the Plan Commission Village Board for full approval. The requested site plan review is for a new 89-room, four-story Hampton Inn Hotel. Propose to be located on the parcel that you see on the screen, immediately to the east of the Moose Lodge, to the west of the existing Home Two, north of Capital Credit Union. You see Morris Avenue right here and Bor Van Avenue to the north. The exterior materials, I'll bring up a rendering of that, do meet all of our standards for amount of EPIS, concealed fastener, metal wall panels, masonry, and glazing. So as you can see, pretty standard color scheme for a Hampton Inn. In terms of the overall site plan, what you see here, the current parcel actually ends right here, just to the east of the building. There'll be some property swap from the existing Home Two to the Hampton Inn. They'll be under the same ownership to accommodate the additional parking for the Hampton Inn on this property right here. If I go back to the map, you will see that there's a stormwater pond right here that will be filled in, and stormwater, both quantity and quality, will be addressed through a combination of buy-in to the Ashland Pond and underground storage for quantity. The Morris Avenue will be reconstructed, it'll be in 2023. Engineering and design is undergoing right now. We did have discussions with Public Works Engineering and the developer regarding timing for upgrading of the utilities. The hotel can remain, if it opens prior to the new utilities being installed and ready, they can access the existing utilities, sewer and water, until such time as the new utilities are ready to be put in place. At that time, sidewalks will also be installed along Morris Avenue, so will provide some pedestrian accommodations on the north side, mirroring the south side sidewalks you see here. In terms of recommended conditions of approval, there were a few, and we have been in discussions already with the developer on these. I'll read through those for the record. All wall panels are to utilize concealed fasteners, all ground-mounted and rooftop mechanicals, associated materials and roof penetrations greater than eight inches visible from the street or joining properties are to be screened. As the building is greater than 50 feet tall and within Airport Zoning District C, the applicant must obtain an application for a height permit and approval from the Green Bay Austin Travel Airport Director. We also have a catch-all, meet all applicable requirements of the Ashwabhanan Site Plan Review Ordinance and all other Ashwabhanan municipal ordinances. From engineering, during water main lateral installation, the village will install an eight-inch valve in the road right-of-way, not on private property. From stormwater, submit the stormwater report for review onsite detention to not exceed existing runoff flows. The question on there was addressed in the meantime. Then coordinate the Ashland Pond buy-in with the village engineer at $6,631 per impervious acre. Continuing on, please, from public safety, please provide construction documents for proposed fire department access. Ensure the contractor is making contact with APS, Fire Inspection Office, to coordinate inspections during and after install of fire safety systems, fire alarm sprinkler, underground hydrants, et cetera. Last, from public safety, ensure proper water supply is provided with hydrants municipal or private. From forestry, there were quite a few comments on there. We actually had a separate meeting with the developer and Tim, our village forester. All of those have been addressed, as noted on the submittal. And then from Bike and Ped, inclusion of bicycle parking that meets the recommendations of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals near the primary entrance. The developer, Mr. Tom Arnott of Beachwood Development, and Jeff and Bert Slindy of Slindy Realty, I believe are available online if you have questions for them. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as well.
Any questions from anybody? Steve?
Just a question as it relates for the funding for the improvements on the street. Are those TIF-funded or are those out of the general fund and/or utilities?
The Morris Avenue reconstruction will be funded with TIF number five.
Okay, thank you.
Can you explain to me what the street Morris Avenue we reconstructed as, what it will look like when it's done?
I guess I'll hand it off to Doug.
Thank you.
Design work hasn't started yet. That'll be starting this summer with survey and design this fall. At first blush, I'm going to say it's going to be something similar to what you see on Mike McCarthy Way, whereby you'll have sidewalk on both sides. We haven't determined the roadway section as of yet, whether it'll be asphalt or concrete, but more than likely at least one lane each direction. We have to go back and check the traffic counts and things of that nature during design, but it's going to be a standard roadway section, sidewalk on both sides, somewhat on Mike McCarthy Way.
As you move ahead, will it come back to village board to go through that again and have some more input into it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Final typical section, we'll come back to the board.
Okay. Then the question I'm glad to see, sounds like sidewalk, will be put on the north side of the road is what's planned according to Erin?
Yeah, I think it's planned for both sides. It's on the south side currently.
I know there's one on the south side, so there'll be one on the north side as well, which is great because it's a sports and entertainment area, and we want to have people be able to walk and move through that area. My question with the development itself, right now, if we're going to put the sidewalk and someone trying to walk into that facility has to walk up the driveway. So I would suggest we look at the facility both from the Bor Van side as well as the Morris side to see about an access point for pedestrians maybe going into the southeast corner where the sidewalk is in front of the building, and then the northeast corner coming out of Bor Van, so a pedestrian does not have to walk up the driveway to get into that facility.
I will definitely reach out to the developers on that request, and note that.
And then maybe putting a crosswalk even in their property, bringing people safely across right to their facility. Because I'm sure a lot of people are going to want to stay there because it's close to the Packer Stadium, and they're going to just want to hike up there. They're not going to want to probably drive. So letting them safely get out of there. And then we have that new development that's coming in on the south side of Morris that will have a little coffee shop in it, and having, you know, a safer access, because people probably will walk over there, too, I would imagine, to take advantage of the coffee shop on that new development on the south side. Another question on stormwater. You said there's going to be some underground storage. Is that something unique, and will the village have to maintain that, or will the developer, or is it just pipes going into the pond, into the pond, or how will that be handled?
That's all financed and designed by the developer, as far as, so the underground storage will be for stormwater quantity, to make sure there's no big flash flows into the storm sewer system. Stormwater quality will be handled through the buy-in into the Ashland Pond.
And then I would assume that Home Two also will no longer, the pond won't be there, so will they be buying into the Ashland Pond as well? Is there a charge for them as well?
Yep, that's correct. They're working with Steve on that.
Okay. I think that were my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any other questions for Erin or the developers? If there are none, I need a motion then to approve with the issues that Erin will talk with the developers about.
Can I ask one more quick question? I'm sorry. Ornamental grass I saw was listed on the bottom in the Morris right-of-way area, and my concern is visibility there. I don't know how close that area is going to be to the road with vehicles coming in and out of there, or people walking out, because, you know, the oriental grasses can get pretty high. But I'm sure Tim looked at it and if he's comfortable with it, but just, I was surprised that there were some ornamental grasses in that area.
Yep, that was actually Tim's recommendation, and so we'll be working with Tim on that.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to approve? So, okay, do we have a?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the requested site plan for Hampton Inn Hotel at 830 Morris Avenue, parcel VA-66-7-F.
With the conditions as listed, yes.
With the conditions as listed?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9B, stormwater update. Mr. Burr and Mr. Martin. This is the exciting part of the meeting. We get to talk about stormwater.
That's right.
It's the highlight of our day.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a while since we talked stormwater. We've got a couple of new board members. I just brought Annie Schmidt here from McMahon. Annie works with us quite a bit, basically, on all of our stormwater projects. He helped us with the stormwater management plan a couple of years ago, and so I invited Annie tonight. He's got a little presentation to kind of bring everybody up to speed. If there are any questions, feel free to interrupt him or myself, and we can hopefully answer them.
Yeah, good. So I appreciate, you know, you guys welcoming in. You know, I know there's new board members and things like that, so every once a decade, you know, it's good to go through this stuff. But honestly, we're going to start doing this probably once a year, and I'll kind of get into why that. But I'll provide you some of the background, the things, you know, some of us have seen before years ago. But so it's, you know, it's all based on, it's part of the municipal stormwater permit that the village has with the DNR. I'll go a little bit into why that exists, things like that. And then the 2021 annual report summary. Steve puts that together every year. I'd like to say I help him a little bit with that, but. So it all stems back, right? Okay, history lesson, real quick, to the Federal Clean Water Act, U.S. EPA, you know, this was back in the 80s, you know, when we're having a lot of problems with water bodies and things that, you know, industries and everything, they just discharged into rivers, lakes, and streams, and it ended up where it went, right? So they started to, you know, require states to identify water bodies that are not fishable, not swimable, things like that. So, and then also identify, you know, what pollutants are causing those problems, right? So if you have algae, it's phosphorus. If, you know, you have, you know, some slime or dirty water, that's sediment. So pollutants causing impairment, I just alluded to a little bit. These are pictures of, the one on the left is at the Bay of Green Bay. Again, this was many years ago, large event, you know, doesn't look like nice, clean, fresh water there. And then the one on the right, and you still see this still today, well, usually around August, right? That is Lake Winnebago. Again, a little unsightly there. So that's why we're trying to do what we're trying to do, or why the DNR is regulating us to try to do what we're trying to do. So it kind of went through some different things in the late 2000s. What we've kind of landed on now is the DNR has specific watersheds throughout the state that are designated as TMDLs, which Total Maximum Daily Load. And it's a large study on these different, you know, water bodies. So this one is the Lower Fox, which is basically from the district of Lake Winnebago to the lower part of the Green Bay. So that was approved in 2012. There's now, I think it was the second one in the state, there's now, I don't know if there's six or eight of them. So these just keep happening more and more. There's actually an Upper Fox that was just approved in the last few years. So it basically just lays out, you know, each community needs to provide, you know, X percent removal of phosphorus and sediment to try to get a healthier water body. So that's kind of what that's all about. This is the map for that area, the Lower Fox River, which obviously is Ashwabhanan is in, part of Dutchman Creek, Ashwabhanon Creek. So the municipal stormwater permit, village initially received that in 2006, basically laid out a number of requirements, which we'll go through here in a little bit, kind of what those are. They renewed the permit in 2019, and this has kind of grown and become a little more sophisticated as we went, and DNR found, you know, different things that may be more important, or things people, communities were lacking in, and pushed forth different things. So these sediment allocations are implemented through municipal stormwater permit. So here is a map of Ashwabhanon and the associated watersheds that are within this TMDL. So each of these have a little bit different allocations as far as, you know, percent removal for pollutants. You can see the bulk of it is Dutchman's Creek, a little bit Fox, directly to the Fox River, Dutchman's Creek, and then a little bit to Dutch Creek that kind of gets up into Green Bay. So stormwater pollutants, right? Where do they come from? This time of year, it's pretty easy to see where a lot of them come from. If you look at the snow along the roadside, right, it's usually black. You know, that's your tire, brake pads, exhaust, things like that. We also have, you know, in the fall, leaves, you know, snow melt, salt, all these things that run off into our streams. So the permit requirements include these eight items. One is public education, public involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site pollution controls, post-construction storm management, municipal pollution prevention, and and stormwater quality management. Again, I'll get in a little bit, what does this mean in a minute here. So last year, the village, i.e. Steve, had the opportunity to have a audit completed by the DNR on the stormwater program. That happened in September and they basically, we go through everything. It's a four-hour meeting or so. We talk about, okay, what are you doing for all these items? You know, how are you doing? What are you doing? What are your complications? The DNR comes back with, okay, these are the things you need to do better. And, you know, Steve and I kinda figure out what that means, what that looks like, how to get better, things like that. So just a little bit further into this, public education and outreach, basically just increase awareness with the public, with the board, that, you know, stormwater is important, let's keep them clean, you know, while we're doing this, changes in public behavior, just kind of informing the community, you know, to kinda, kinda help with this process and clean our waters up. Public involvement and participation. This goes into, okay, getting the public not only educated, but get them involved. Okay, you have, you know, some stormwater cleanup activities. I know Schwabon May Park does a cleanup every year. So it's things like that, getting the community involved and active in stormwater and cleanup. Kinda one of the, the, the good examples that the DNR likes to use and that we kinda like as well is, you know, like a scout program where they have an opportunity to go out and they stencil, you know, by inlets in the street, you know, drains to river, you know, don't pollute, things like that. So just different opportunities to get the public involved. Illicit discharge detection, that's basically all the storm sewer outfalls within the village. The village is required to go out and have them inspected, you know, throughout the whole village, maybe four to six years, you know, every four to six years, we hit each one, take a sample, you know, try to determine if there's any pollutants that are being discharged on anybody's property or, you know, illegal connections with sanitary sewer, things like that. So it's kinda monitoring what's coming out of our outfalls. There's the blue, construction site pollution control, which, you know, we talk about with developments and, you know, they need to put in their, their silt fence and things to keep their construction site from, you know, leaching out into our storm sewers and polluting. The post-construction storm management is the ponds, you know, that's required by developers. We just talked about one, they have their own underground storage, but it goes to a village pond, right? So we need to provide that for all construction sites and, you know, developments that occur in the village. That's probably the one everybody's the most familiar with, right? And then there's municipal stormwater pollution prevention. That has to do with, you know, municipal properties, vehicle maintenance areas, the village, village, you know, the village yard back here, things like that to try to control that and manage that. The last one is a stormwater quality management, which is basically monitoring and maintaining in some cases or requiring the owner to maintain stormwater BMPs. So, you know, biofilters, ponds, both public and private throughout the village. So that's another requirement that, you know, the village has to kinda keep an eye on all these ponds and other devices. So here's, we're getting into, you know, the annual report for Schwabon's stormwater permit. So this is kinda what Steve's put, Steve puts together every year. And one of the things the DNR found on our audit was that they're requiring, you know, that this be brought to the board every year, you know, the public get involved and more knowledgeable of, of what, what we're doing here, so.
Yes, I just wanna touch base on some of the things that, that we've been doing. Our annual report is posted on our website. So the general public, you know, businesses can go on there and look at it. If they have questions, they can always reach out to us here at the village. So some of the things that, that are listed here for public education, you know, the website, obviously there's, there's things that we post on there. We haven't produced any brochures at this point. We may do something like that in the future. We do have meetings that go out with our utility bills, you know, so there's some, some flyers that get added into there. There's some information in the following newsletter. One of the big things that, that we do also that helps with public education outreach is we're members of NUSC, Northeast Wisconsin Stormwater Consortium. They're based out of the valley. There's several counties, several communities. You remember offhand how many communities? There's like 50 some or-
Yeah, yeah.
It's a large number of communities, based majority in Northeast Wisconsin that belong to that. So we kinda group our efforts. There's a membership fee dues that we pay and they do a lot of public education outreach. They go to different events in the summertime and, and, you know, pass with information or put out displays that, you know, the village as, as a member, we get credit for. You know, some, some, there's a training events, the active participation, you know, we're looking to, you know, do some of that in the future. We'll, you know, look to use NUSC, you know, with that. So the one, I guess I touched on NUSC, you know, some of the volunteer events, I know Annie touched on, you know, the Schwabon Bay cleanup, you know, that's actually a perfect one. Now the park and rec department, you know, takes, you know, kinda spearheads that. I've talked to recs about maybe beefing that up a little bit, but there's, it's such a great activity because, you know, the parks got, you know, bordered by Schwabon Creek and the Fox River. So that, that one gives, it gives the village a lot of credit. We, we, you know, have volunteers, I think last year recs mentioned there was, you know, 40 to 50 people that, that showed up, which is great. You know, I think the year before with COVID, obviously that, you know, that didn't occur, but that was one of the comments through the audit that, you know, we had to talk to the DNR about is they kinda dinged us a little bit on some of these activities. It's like, well, we couldn't have, people couldn't gather and they understood that. So as we move forward, that's some of the things, you know, we're gonna wanna, you know, reach out to the public on, maybe organize some events, you know, just, just so if you guys hear people that are interested in doing something, the Boy Scout group or like Annie alluded to, or a school, school group, that'd be great to talk with them and, you know, use their, their bodies to help us get, you know, get the, get the word out. Next one, Annie. What's the discharge? Annie alluded to, you know, we have, the village is broken up into quadrants, you know, with 41 and, and 172. So we, what we try to do is hit up all the storm sewer outfalls in one quadrant per year. And, you know, our consultant will go all, you know, they have a sampling kit, they'll go to each outfall, grab a sample. If they're dry, it's kinda during a dry condition, if they're dry, you can't take a sample. But if there's any liquid, they'll, they have a, a sampling kit that looks for, you know, different types of pollutants. And we, last year, this is, you know, our report data from 2021, just happened to be in industrial park, you know, the sampler was down by Dutchman's Creek and there was a green color in the creek and coming out of the storm sewer. Just happened that it was one of the outfalls, we were testing that, you know, this year at that day. I found out that there was a rooftop air conditioner that had a leak, you know, so we traced it back to the, that business and they were able to, you know, stop that leak, you know. So that's the type of things that we're looking for. That was a one-case situation. What we're looking for is somebody that's, you know, doing something, washing stuff down the storm sewer that, you know, over a period of time, we catch them, try to stop them. That was one that we just happened to catch, which was great. There's been a couple of other ones where we've got noticed, you know, people are walking the trails down by the, the trip that goes through the industrial park. They saw some coloring. You know, we worked with the DNR, you know, DNR got notified. We traced that one back to just somebody, you know, washing, you know, some, some parts off in the parking lot at an industry, you know. We were able to figure out what, what it was and it wasn't a detriment to the environment. So that's the type of stuff we're trying to eliminate though. So that's, I guess, just to touch on what, what we noticed back in 2021. Construction sites, this is, you know, we work, it's an engineering department or public works along with the building inspection department. They're, you know, they're the ones that are going to these construction sites daily. They'll keep an eye on, you know, the erosion control, you know, stuff, will, will put in, you know, keep, you know, keep track of, you know, the silt fences, the tracking pads. One thing, you guys as board members may notice when you're driving around, if there's sediment in the road, you know, by all means, you know, call, let us know. That's the things we're looking for. I've talked to the guys that are on the garbage truck, if they see, you know, something that, you know, they see a truck pull out, there's mud all over the road, you know, these construction site guys, they know, you know, they have to keep, you know, keep this stuff, stuff clean, but sometimes they're in a hurry and, you know, cement truck comes in, not part of the project per se, and he's down the road, they, you know, they're busy, but they gotta, you know, make sure they, you know, keep, you know, keep the street, you know, clean and whatnot. So we haven't had to, this past year, issue citations, but in the past, you know, we try to work with the contractors, you know, we'll talk to them verbally, give them verbal warnings, then it'll be, you know, an email, then it'll be a written warning and then if it just continues, obviously then a citation has to be, has to be written. So we've done that in the past. Post-construction sites, you know, Aaron mentioned, you know, the pond over by, on Morris Avenue, you know, that's one of many onsite ponds that, that we keep an eye on. So it's just a matter of, are they, are things growing, you know, trees growing in there? Are there, is there debris? Is there erosion? So there's, we have a list of all the different onsite, you know, BMPs that are out there in the village and so it's something that we just keep an eye on. And then we, you know, report each year on new ones and other ones that we inspected.
Steve, how many private ponds do we have? I just noticed that on there. You said you inspected seven private ponds?
Oh, if you had a number on there.
No. I wanna say 70?
Really?
70 total.
Yeah.
Village and private. So when you talk about, you know, the DNR is asking you to, you know, keep an eye on all public and private, that's, it's about 70 right now.
I don't, yeah, they're not expecting us to inspect every one of those every year, but it's if we, you have a, a running list and if we can keep track of them, you know, say you do, you know, a quarter of those, you know, per year, you know, and then just follow up if there's inspected, you make note of it, if there's an issue, you can, you know, we have a, a standard letter that I send out, you know, to contact them to do some maintenance on it, you know. So it's, it goes, you know, pretty good reception. You know, the issue that sometimes I run into is that on these onsite BMPs, it's a rain garden, a bio-retention, you know, stormwater pond, the designer, the engineer, say the developer, they're not the person that's onsite anymore. You know, there's a business manager or a, you know, site manager. They don't even realize what they have. You know, they, they hire a, a service to cut the grass, but there's this pond or this other feature and it's just there, that's where the water runs. They don't really understand what it's for and what they have to do to maintain it. So there's some, there's some public education that happens as well. The next one that, that we do things for the pollution prevention, this is one you guys see quite often, you know, the street sweeper. This is where the street sweeper falls in. You know, we, we try to get the sweet sweeper out as, as much as possible. You know, when the buds are falling down in the spring and, you know, the leaves, you know, there's a, there's some effort in the, in the fall as well with the sweeper along with, you know, the guys taking up all the leaves, but, you know, that's all covered under the stormwater utility. You know, the sweeping, the vehicles, the leaf collection, you know, we got a back truck for this public works department that goes out and cleans the catch basins. You know, it's like we, we monitored, it's about a quarter of the village per year along with our mill paved streets, we'll go and inspect, you know, catch basins and whatnot. And it doesn't look like we, you know, we cleaned too many of them, but there's, there was probably 10 times that, that were inspected, you know, in that, in those areas. This, this slide here talks about, yeah, they, DNR is asking about how much, you know, how much salt are you putting down? You know, so Lee does a good job keeping track, you know, how, how many times, you know, the trucks go out, how much does each truck carry? You know, there's also, we have a couple of vehicles that put down brine, so we keep track of that. You know, we don't do any, you know, I think years ago or some communities might use beet juice, we don't, we haven't done that for quite awhile. There was some training that Lee attended called Saltwise, just talking about how to, you know, train your, some of your staff on, you know, calibrating the, the spinners on the, the trucks and, you know, how to, you know, they want you to use less salt, you know, that's, that's a fine line. You know, days like today, you know, when you got, you know, freezing rain coming down, you wanna make it safe, right? So it's just a fine line, so we, you know, do the best we can and, you know, we just have to keep track of how much, how much we're putting down and, and, you know, the DNR just wants to know that.
Yeah, and they haven't really said, okay, community, hey, you're using too much salt, you're, you know, doing too much. It's, it's more, they want you to be aware, okay, this is how much we're putting down, you know? This is, you know, are we getting our staff trained that, okay, A, if you're putting too much salt down more than you need, one, you're wasting, you're wasting salt and you're wasting, you know? So they're not requiring certain things, they just, it's an awareness thing, you know, they want everybody to be aware and do the best they can while maintaining safety, so. So, you know, BMPs, we call them BMPs, so ponds, you know, biofilters, things like this. So, you know, kinda the basic ones, you know, street sweeping, you know, we get, you see some, some dirt and things in the, in the curb, so we street sweep. There's proprietary devices, those are typically used by developers. It's like a, it's all within a manhole or a, or a box under the pavement that comes through and it filters pollutants out. We usually don't see those on larger projects because they, they can't handle that type of volume, but it's one of those things. Stream stabilization is another one. Some of these streams, you know, Dutchman, Schwabon, some of the smaller, you know, streams, we're losing earth, you know, it's, it's running down and we're washing down into the stream. So it's kinda stabilizing that with riprap or other features that stopped it from happening. So we've got grass swales and all those clean up some stormwater, the biofilters, the ponds that we're used to seeing. So just some different, you know, I don't, there's a couple proprietary devices in the village, I think, private sites, one or two. Anyway, yeah.
They're expensive, that's why-
Yeah.
People don't use them, yeah, they're really expensive.
Right. So before I get into this next slide, I just kinda wanted to, kinda took some notes while Steve was talking, just to, so we talk about the 70, you know, BMPs in the village that, you know, we need to be monitoring and making sure they're maintained if we don't maintain them ourselves. That's probably one of the, the larger items that the DNR kinda found that, okay, we need to start doing better with that, right? So we've always done a good job with, you know, the, the ponds we own, but what about all the other ones, right? And then the other point is in the village's audit letter, the last, you know, after, okay, you do gotta do better at this, 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 this and this, was a short paragraph of kind of a kudos. Hey, the village is actually doing a really good job with what they're doing. So you hear all this negative, you gotta do this better, this better. And I've been involved with a few other audits for other communities and, you know, some of this stuff they're finding. There's, there's a lot of missing pieces that these communities have. So no program's perfect, it's just, you know, getting it a little better. But there was a kudos paragraph in there about the job that, that Steve and, and the village are doing. So wanted to mention that.
I could share that with you guys.
Yeah.
Steve, did, did we get credit when we had to walk the, the creek in the very hot summer?
summer?
Well, that was listed in it somewhere.
Yeah, good.
It's one of those activities.
It was on the back page.
Yeah. So, and then I wanted to kind of just go through, okay, there's a reason behind everything the DNR is asking us to do, right? So, one of the things they're asking us to do is present this annual report every year to the board, so that the public can hear it. There's a purpose to that, right? So, the purpose is to, again, it's that public education and outreach, right? So we want everybody to be informed, you know, more ideas come in, hey, we could do a cleanup at this site, or, you know, just kind of other ideas like that. So, the point is to look for input, get more minds into this to see, you know, what, what else can we do to, to better the program, so. Anyway, so that's the long and short of the annual report and the audit.
This, this is, you know, the intensity with the water utility and the wastewater utility and that type of thing was always very, very tantamount in municipalities. But the stormwater requirements by the state are becoming just, they're been, they've been teared up, and basically, it's becoming as much of an intensive activity for a municipality as water utility and a wastewater utility. And it's going to continue to go in that direction as we go forward with, you know, our, our waters and our lakes, and the question, now, now we've got PFAS, you know, I mean, it's just.
Yeah.
One thing after another. The one thing man has, has been really good at doing is polluting. And now we're having to deal with what we've done with municipal, you know, one thing they should really be focusing on is, is a lot of this agricultural items, you know, and the large dairy farms and the applications and other things, but I'm not going to go off on that, I'm going to shut up on that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good tangent there.
Yeah, that could be a whole discussion for a whole damn day. But that being said, yeah, you guys are doing a good job. You know, you are advanced, I think, in the, in the Brown County area. And, and with that, these are the things we need to take note of as municipal elected officials. There's going to be more and more work in these areas, and more and more work required of municipal employees for, to achieve the state standards, the state requirements and regulations. So, we appreciate the, the presentation. Thank you.
I just have a question. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
No, I just said ditto.
No. I just have a question on street sweeping. Is there a frequency requirement through our MS four permit that we have to sweep so many times a year, or is there anything that says that if there's an area that is more dirty or prone to have more dirt in that area, that we have to sweep that more frequently? Is there anything like that in our MS four permit or requirement?
Not as you're describing. So, it, it depends on what you want to do to achieve more, right? So, which brings me right into my, my last slide here. So this is the, so as part of this whole process, right, you know, to help Steve with this, and we prepared this, you know, report, guy, it's, you know, quite thick, but we basically lay out the entire village, where all the watersheds are, individualized watersheds, how we can treat that water, right? So this is the, through all that work and all the calculations, the proposed plan of action to meet the TMBLs, right? So, I believe not right now, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, I don't recall what the villages is, but, you know, maybe it's 2035, 2040, right, is our, our carrot out there, right?
It's out there, and I think, I think it says, a couple of years ago, we brought this forward, and it was, like, we had to build like twenty ponds to get to that. And it wasn't like a drop dead date, but it's like, yeah, we have this plan, and that's what we're moving for, and that's the next agenda item, is helping, but we can, we'll get to that point.
And the DNR wants to see advancement from today to your plan of action in some manner, right? So even that date we established is not a hard date, right? Depends on budgets and how things go. So, but what we do is we look at, okay, if we street sweep every week, okay, that provides us X pounds toward our goal, right? If we sweep once a year, okay, that provides X pounds, okay? Now we need more ponds if we sweep less, right? But there's also a cost to each of these things. So it's, it's kind of balancing that, that, that program as a whole. And really, the only thing that has to do with where we sweep and when is really, once we have a pond watershed established, other than aesthetics, right, because we still want to sweep and get the dirt out of the curb and things like that. So if aesthetics were out, the areas that drain to a pond that the village has and maintains, we technically wouldn't need to sweep for stormwater credit, right? Because that dirt you're taking out of the curb is going to go to the pond and settle out. So you'd be double counting, you know, those, those amounts. So really, you know, in this map, the orange watersheds are where we have ponds we're taking credit for already. So technically, from a stormwater pollution reduction perspective, we would not need to sweep those areas, okay? But again, you ask yourself, now, the sweeper has to stop here and, you know, do you just sweep them for aesthetics? Do you, you know? But really, sweeping, you know, we change the program, it changes the whole model and how we do overall. So if we sweep a lot more, maybe one pond, we wouldn't have to build, right? But again, it's, again, just a cost balancing thing, so. Does that answer?
Yes, thank you.
That question?
Well, when I'm, when I'm talking to my municipal clients on street sweeping, I, I just think it's really important, if you're creating some sort of plan, to ensure that that language specifies that these are goals. It's not our policy that we're going to sweep Ash Street every court. It has to be couched as a goal, otherwise, if we miss a street, or if we think, well, you know, the leaves didn't fall until a little bit later this year, so we're going to wait to sweep it, and we miss what we've imposed as a deadline, we get concerned about liability. Someone slips and falls on the road, and maybe there's some algae or whatever that's built up there. I've handled that case before. Oh, sorry about that.
So just as we're, as we're writing, as we're writing these programs, being really careful to talk about those as, as goals, not as policies or schedules.
Yeah, we can, we can revisit that, just to verify that it's more of a goal. I believe it is versus a policy.
Well, yeah, and as far as the DNR goes, I mean, it's, okay, we're going to sweep three times a year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If, if one year just doesn't work out, we sweep two, that, you know, they're not going to ding us on that, you know, they're, okay, well, keep trying to do three, right? So, you know, that, that, hopefully doesn't become a concern, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the DNR.
From your end, I get that, you know, but here it's.
You have to be careful about that language.
You know, they're not going to hold your feet to the fire on that, you know, that much. So, now if you say you're doing it six times a year, and you do it two every year for the next ten years, they might, wait, wait, what, you know, what are we doing? So, yeah. Okay, so the other thing I was going to mention before I, before I close this down, is there's some ponds to mention. So the ones that I labeled the names in green, which is Mar Hill, and then you go down, kind of on the bottom is Maine, Coronas and Ashland Pond. Those are ponds that the village has built as village-owned stormwater ponds in the last, oh boy, I don't know, three years? And the one in the upper right is the Ashland Pond, which is the one we just talked about earlier, that that development is going to, going to discharge to. The ones in the yellow, along with One Stream Restoration, which I talked a little bit about earlier, a stream restoration project. So, those two in yellow and that stream restoration project are the, the next agenda item. So again, the key for us is, you know, we put this out to the public, to the board, you know, any questions, any concerns, any thoughts, any ways to make it better, you know, kind of was the whole purpose of this thing. So, please, you know, let us know, let Steve know if, you know, anything comes to mind.
Yeah, if you think of something, yeah, even after the meeting during the week, or see something, by all means, you guys all know my, you know, door's open, so, you know, I stopped to enter call. No problem.
Any questions, comments? Otherwise, give Steve a call. He's always willing to talk about stormwater.
That's what Steve's here for.
Yes.
I was wondering.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, this was information only, so you don't need action. Number nine C, review and action on Plimrock Pond, Glory Pond, and Shady East Stream Restoration Contract Award.
All right, so a good prelude, right? So we talked about what the village is doing, and this engine item is what we're going to do, hopefully. The first one, this is, so it's a contract that includes the Plimrock Pond, which is a, is the pond located down by Plumrock Terrace and Holmgren Way. It was part of the Midwest Expansion Property. Jeff Melner graciously donated the pond footprint, existing pond footprint and adjoining property to the village, to the stormwater utility to enlarge that pond. With the assistance from Andy at McMahon, we, we did our due diligence, and this was a project that actually was budgeted last year, and just with some delays and acquiring the property and whatnot. It's in this year's budget to, to enlarge that pond. So, that's the Plimrock Pond. The Glory Pond is an existing pond that was built cashback in the late nineties, and it's definitely in need of some, some maintenance. There's some large trees, sediment. So that's a, that's a maintenance project. Glory Pond is located south of Glory Road, kind of, O'Phee Schneider off the lobby there. And then the third project that's included in this contract is the little stream that's off of Shady, just north of North Road. If you take, come down past it, you can kind of see there's a sharp bend there. There's that bank, it's eroded. It's in the, it's village conservancy, so it's village property. And so we'd like to clean that up and stabilize that, prevent more, you know, sediment dirt from basically eroding and washing into the stream. So all three of these projects, by bidding them together under one contract, we get a better price from the contractor. So, the item for you tonight is, these three projects under one contract, you know, we, we bid it out back in January. We had four contractors, four responsible bids were received. The lowest bid was from Peters Concrete Company in the amount of $644,307.98. Attached to the green sheet is a letter of recommendation from McMahon, along with the summary of the bids. And also, I included the, the plans for the projects, if you had, just, just for your information to understand what we were planning on doing. Peters Concrete has done several ponds for us in the past years, so we're, don't have any reservations about working with them. So after this review, I guess, you know, staff would recommend approval of awarding the Plimrock Pond, Glory Pond, and Shady East Stream Restoration Construction Contract to Peters Concrete Company with a bid amount of $644,307.98.
And that's your recommendation, correct?
That is our recommendation.
I'd make a motion to approve the awarding of the Plimrock Pond, Glory Pond, and Shady East Stream Restoration Construction Contract to Peters Concrete Company for the bid amount of $644,307.98.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Everybody understand? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Nine D, review and action regarding the 2022 quotes for Public Works Utilities and Building Inspection Vehicle Purchases. Doug.
If you remember, in 2021, we had to delay a few pickup truck purchases because supply just wasn't out there. And in 2022, there are all kinds of vehicles, they are everywhere, they're growing on trees, and it's not a problem at all. Or maybe there's still a shortage out there. So we put our specifications out for 2022, again, carrying over a couple of vehicles from 2021. We had one engineering, two Public Works, two utility, and one building inspection vehicle left to purchase. And we put the specifications out for all of those vehicles. And the, the story continues in terms of the supply out there, still, still struggling on fleet vehicles being available for communities to purchase. Ewald, who holds the state contract, was able to find two Dodge Ram 1500 crew cabs that would meet specification for Public Works. And Bergstrom locally here was able to find a Chevy Colorado that would meet the specifications for building inspection. The two utility pickup trucks and the engineering pickup truck are on hold, will be putting those out to quote again this summer. We're hearing that there's a possibility that the June-July timeframe, they may be opening up for more fleet orders at that time. We heard the same thing last year, but we're going to keep our fingers crossed and hope we can get a couple more vehicles yet this year. The two Public Works Dodge Ram 1500 crew cabs were $33,073 each. The budget on them was $35,000. And the building inspection Chevy, Chevy Colorado, excuse me, had a quote of $28,435.60, a budget number of $30,000. So the recommendation from staff would be to purchase the 2022 Chevy Colorado from Bergstrom Automotive for $28,435.60. And the two 22, two, 2022 Ram 1500 crew cabs, no more twos, at $33,073 each from Ewald. Anything we'd move forward with in June or July would be coming back to Village Board. There'd be just three purchases at this time.
Just one question, do these, are these replacing existing vehicles then, Doug?
Yeah, these are all, these are all replacements.
Well, yeah.
Couple of them, luckily, on the utility end, those trucks can still go a bit longer. The Public Works ones, we've got patched together pretty good again. But the utility ones, we can make it through the end of the year into next year if we need to.
We don't have the vehicle with the Fred Flintstone floorboards anymore, though.
That's good.
Why, why not?
Why not?
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the purchase as stated by our Public Works Director with two of the vehicles from Bergstrom and then two from Ewald, for the total, where is the total on there? I guess there's no total. With the remaining two to be recorded in June or July.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the recommendation that Public Works Director recommended. How was that, Doug?
Just to clarify again, it'll be two Dodge Ram crew cabs from Ewald and one Chevy Colorado from Bergstrom. Three total.
Okay, does everybody understand? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine E, consider discuss an ordinance amending section 2-1-46, regular meetings amending section 2-1-47, special meetings and creating section 2-1-60, remote electronic or virtual meetings. Joel.
Thank you, Madam President. This particular ordinance was presented last month at Village Board for discussion and direction to staff. Since that time, staff has taken that direction and applied it to the draft ordinance that's set before you for this evening for possible consideration. A couple of amendments are really kind of cleanup items. So section 2-1-46 effectively is amending the regular meeting schedule in compliance with statutes. We need to identify our regular meeting times. The previous ordinance had identified two dates per month that the Village Board would meet. We have been routinely meeting single, on a single date per month as a board, so we reflect that. And then there was a request at, at the last meeting to possibly move the official start time. to possibly move the official start time of the Village Board meetings from 6:30 to 6:00 PM. However, I understand that there may be some concerns about doing that. So we can certainly reflect the motion tonight to reflect an amendment to that or implementation date. Section 2-1-47 is more of just a cleanup element, just reflecting changes to our organizational chart, being that we have a separated village clerk and village treasurer position, just identifying that the village clerk would be responsible for communicating under that section. And then also identifying that we have the ability to communicate electronically versus by personal service with posted notes on individual door, door frames of village trustees. So, and Chris would have to ride my horseback, as I understand, the way the old ordinance was read. And then finally, Section 2-1-60 reflects the changing elements as a result of the pandemic as it relates to virtual and remote meeting attendance. As you can see, we have a couple trustees attending remotely this evening. So under the current, under the proposed ordinance, that remote and virtual meeting attendance would be allowable pending the approval of the Village President. There is a couple of conditions within that section of code where it would be prohibited. First, if there's a quasi judicial hearing on the agenda, the Village President would be tasked with conversing with the village attorney to verify that the nature of that hearing would permit or be permissible to have remote attendance. And then the second item that was discussed to, to some detail at the last meeting was closed sessions. So we've made that pretty much an outright prohibition. So you would not be able to participate in closed session in a remote virtual format, just because of, from, from a confidentiality point of view, the board did not feel confident that we would be able to maintain a confidential, secure environment in that remote setting. So that was, was stricken from, from that provision as well. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have regarding the draft ordinance. If there are changes that are desired, then those changes can certainly be made as part of the motion to, to potentially adopt the, the draft. Thank you.
Okay, Jay, I, I know you want to speak.
Yeah, the only, the only issue that I would request is that on the starting of the meetings at six o'clock, that we would have the start date of that be effective the June meeting of 2022. I have some already committed, I got baseball games in May, April and May that hit on meeting nights, and there's no way I would be able to make a six o'clock meeting. So I would just request that we just start the six o'clock times in June.
Okay, any, any comments on that?
Well, Jay, how is that going to work for you later in the year or next season?
Next season, and what I can do, Chris, is I can, the problem is, is the schedule's already set. Next year, I can just go to Nick Singer and just say, look, don't ease on the last Tuesday for the season.
And you're comfortable with that? And he'll be able to accommodate you with that?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Gary?
You hear me now?
Yes.
You know, I don't have any problem with six o'clock. We all, we all have conflicts in our time periodically. You know, if we can't make it, we've got the virtual thing now, so I don't see a problem. Jay, I understand your issue, so June doesn't have a problem with me. So I don't think it's an issue with doing it the way you presented. If there's no other questions, I'll move to approve it as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as presented. I'm going to assume with the change to the six o'clock meeting in the June meeting.
That is fine with me.
That's right, Gary.
That would be starting in June, Jay, is what you're requesting? Yes. Okay, not a problem.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion?
I just have one question for the other boards and commissions that we have. Then they can, they're handling the same way. So they would need to reach out to the clerk, a member of any board or commission, talk to Chris, Chris will talk to Mary, and then you would give approval of them being able to virtually attend that meeting as well. Is that how we handle the boards and commissions too?
Correct.
So we should make sure we get this information to those members so they understand that. I don't know how much that occurs, but just so they understand that as well.
Yep, correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine, F, action on the intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the Village of Ashwabnan and the City of DePere regarding sharing of equipment. Brian?
So this intergovernmental agreement stems from a conversation we had with Chief Al Madsky over at DePere Fire Rescue a few months ago. DePere Fire Rescue has a brand new ladder truck that is on order and unfortunately somewhat delayed. It should be here a little bit later this year. However, their current ladder truck is having some difficulties. It's currently in service. However, if it goes out of service, we had discussed the possibility of allowing DePere to utilize our ladder truck on a short term temporary basis. However, in order to do that, it was decided that we should probably have something in writing to cover all the liabilities on that and to set clear expectations for that. So as long as, as far as the ladder use in general, right now for several types of fire calls, if we were to get a structured fire here in the Village of Ashwabnan, we'd roll with a engine out of this station. And DePere would actually be sending a ladder to assist with that alarm response here in the village. So if they are down a ladder, but borrowing our ladder, that would actually work out to our benefit in that case. So the purpose of this is just to make sure that if, on the off chance their current ladder goes down before their new ladder is in, we'd be able to keep that capability. We do have it built in there that obviously village needs would come first. So if we have some needs or there are other extending circumstances, such as one of our apparatuses is down, we would keep that ladder at our station for our use.
I, I did have a question about this, so I went down and talked to Brian today about it because within the Fitch study, they, they had mentioned something about ladder truck versus engine. So I got the skinny on, on the exact difference between a ladder truck and an engine, and I'm okay with this.
This makes a lot of sense, again, cooperating with the City of DePere. As long as they maintain their roundabout landscaping, that should be fine with me.
Long to Al next time I see him.
He's been passed on so many times, I.
We do have an, with DePere anyway, with the backup for fire department. Am I right?
Yes.
All right, so all we're doing is just helping them out with the equipment, what they're having a problem with at the moment.
Right.
All right, let her go.
Is that a motion?
Let her go.
Yes, motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to let her go, which is approve the, the intergovernmental agreement with DePere for the ladder truck. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine, G, action on Class A beer, Class A cider, only license for Randi Enterprises LLC, DBA Jaguar Shaw. This is for Chris.
This is more of just a paper shuffle. What they're doing is they're dissolving the Jaguar Station LLC, which Jaguar Shaw was under. And they are combining their entities under the Randi Enterprises LLC. But because there's a change in the seller's permit number, they had to reapply under an original application.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that change for the LLC. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine, H, action on Resolution R 2-1-22, disallowing claims submitted by Peter Pekarsky, received November 1, 2021. Chris?
This has to do with the request that when, we have central count and when we are processing those absentee ballots, we put the number of the voter on the back of the ballot. So what that does is when there's open records requests, you can, technically, you could figure out how someone voted. He's asking that we don't follow state statutes. And of course, we're going to follow state statutes. And the reason for that is if somebody votes at the polls and they absentee, we would be able to go in and pull that ballot out so that they're not double voting if we catch it in time. So any questions on that?
Yes, Chris. Chris, you're saying we should deny this, am I correct?
Yeah, yeah, Gary, this is, this is Joel. Just a couple of quick things. So Chris is right, obviously, that the request on the claim is that they're requesting that the village cease the act of marking the ballots in accordance to Wisconsin State Statute 7.523A. That claim, when it was received, was submitted to our insurance. And then our insurance, obviously, was engaged through, through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Our insurance and legal counsel from the, from the league has identified that this claim hasn't met the sufficient requirements under statutes to be even allowed. So even though we, we've taken a position that we are in fact following statutes as it relates to the processing of absentee ballots, in central count, the claim itself hasn't met the statutory requirements to be a valid claim. And so we are disallowing the claim under that premise as identified in the resolution.
As that is the recommendation of our insurance carrier, I would make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 2-1-22, Resolution Disallowing Claims Submitted by Peter Pekarsky, received November 1, 2021. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 2-1-22. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, items for next agenda. If there is anything that you would like on the agenda, please give the office a call and we'll get it on the agenda. Number 11, closed session items. During the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabnan may convene into closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent C, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on village attorney vacancy and considering the employment compensation or performance evaluation data over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent F, for the purpose of possible discussion and action on village attorney vacancy and the financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where parent B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, to consider discuss act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the TIF developers' performance agreement with Gen Cap Dana Ashwabnan 75 LLC for tax parcel VA-56-4-1, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. D, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent one, parent G, to consider discuss act regarding the TIF developers' performance agreement with Gen Cap Dana Ashwabnan 75 LLC for tax parcel VA-56-4-1 and conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. The board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go on a closed session?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardasky? Yes. Trustee Kubaki?
Yes.
Trustees Durble?
Yes.
Trustee Flukie?
Yes.
And trustee Service?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, guys.
We're going into closed session.
See ya.
Guys.
See ya.
This conference is no longer being recorded.